And if we can all rise, well, if we can rise, we're the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Strout will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, I'm just going to call for a roll call if you can just make notes. Um, our chair deliver here, vice chair bishop.
Here.
Mr. Strout.
Here.
Mr. Esco.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Here.
And Mr. Artson is here. And then, Bill, would you like to do roll call for the finance committee?
I certainly would. I'm Bill Bursin, Chair of the Finance Committee. Jeff Noble, Vice Chair. Karen Schmidt, the Secretary. I might just have this slide down the line, but Mike Jerome, a member. Mitch Lacker. Susan Carroll Lombardi. And Tom Irwin, all of the members of this illustrious finance committee of ours.
Excellent. Thank you all for joining. A couple, just more housekeeping things here through the agenda. Public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company, institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make the request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person, making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure or participate, please try to attend in person. Thank you. Anybody to address the board this evening? Here in CNN? Okay. All right, the first one. We'll go ahead and kick off our joint meeting with the finance committee. And thank you again for everybody attending this evening. And we're kicking this off a little early, earlier than our seven o'clock select board meetings to spend more time on these important topics. And really, when it comes down to review and discussing the CPRSD-proposed FY '24 budget, that's a pretty significant chunk of the budget for the town of Dalton. And the second item is review and discuss remaining ARPA funds. So the town received the American Reinvestment Recovery. And I keep on forgetting what the full acronym is, but we've received some money from the feds to apply to different projects and initiatives. And we have made some decisions over the last couple of months, and then we have part of that still remaining. So wanted to engage the finance committee on looking at that balance and other priorities they have in the town. So with that, we do have, I saw Mr. Lacatelle on the line. So, Mr. Lacatelle, thank you for joining, and please do jump in at any time as we're going through this discussion. And really, the goal objective tonight is really to walk through the budget presentation. I hope everybody had a chance to review it at your leisure. And just really come up with shared questions that we might have for the school committee and/or any types of concerns or things of that nature. There is also a seven town, there's also two other important meetings this week. One is a seven town advisory meeting, which is tomorrow night. And so probably a confirmation from Dalton, Windsor, was it Windsor? Dalton, Washington, Hemsdale, and Windsor, I believe. And so four out of seven towns will be at the seven town advisory meeting tomorrow along with the superintendent. And I believe Greg Boyner will be there as well, who's Director of Finance. And then the next meeting is the public hearing on the 16th with the full school committee. So what I would like, what I suggested to both groups is that we just come up with kind of a shared question list or shared topics that we might need to present to the school committee and then go from there. So, okay, with that, why don't we kind of go to the next slide? And I'm going to just kind of go quick through this. So we know some things that are still to be determined, the health insurance benefits, and I believe they got an update not long, maybe last week or the week before. The property insurance for the school is set for that particular increase, and I think Greg mentioned might go down to about 12. State revenue is still in question. So I'll defer to Mr. Lacatelle if he has any updates on that as we go through this. And then the salaries negotiation here for administrative assistants, custodians, food services, and paraprofessionals. Last I've heard, there's progress being made there. So we see the projected increases in the retirement contribution, the temporary ban of interest and principal payment, a technology update, so the service storage array and camera network for security purposes. And just for the note, especially anybody who has a tech background, I did inquire about cloud services for that, if there's any type of way to save money moving to the cloud. They have reviewed that, but not much of a savings in that category. And then a career coordinator added for 25 FTE, and then certainly transportation cost increased. So we see the difference in the FY '23 to '24 budget, 5.86 with variance of 1.7. And then a breakdown of those changes in dollars. And you see the impact at the regional school transportation change of 132,000. Who knows what's going to happen coming out of the state with whatever they're doing from the budget perspective and what that number's going to actually look like at the end. Next slide. And then the business finance and the technology side, pretty significant jumps there, but we saw the technology was that storage array and it's new equipment. And then you see a couple of other additional costs going up in the FY '23 budget. Guidance, Mr. Lacatelle, I might mess this one up, but I believe there was a position, I believe was under guidance, was a grant program, half of an FTE that then moved into a half FTE carryover from the grant to then being covered in FY '24. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct. That's for a guidance or a career counseling.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then you see the other impacts around the benefits for a chunk there. Next slide. And then this was a nice breakdown about where the dollars are going between salaries, benefits of the OEPED trust fund, special education services, transportation, operations, and maintenance. And then breakdown of the district by students, so number of students in each particular school. Next slide. And a breakdown of the elementary FTEs between all the different teachers and then the classifications below. And then a little slice of the middle and high school. And then the number of district students between, and the teacher FTEs in each particular location. New positions. So let's pause here for a minute. Craneville Elementary, one kindergarten teacher kicked for a elementary paraprofessional one, and then a couple of FTE added at Nescafe Regional. And then Watcoona Regional School, one full FTE split between two half FTEs. Any questions so far? We'll just pause there for a minute.
So that one, the last career coordinator, is someone really affecting the operating budget, correct?
I believe so.
And I think, just so you know, I think there's another budget out there with just some minor changes to it, I think, from your initial budget. There's a tentative budget out there now.
Yeah, that's the updated one. Yeah, yeah. Next slide. Special revenue sources, the athletics, school choice, circuit breaker, food services, grants, that's money coming in. And then the initial capital budget town assessments. Let's pause here for a moment. So our variance in the initial capital budget, this is, is going down by 28,000? Next slide. Okay. And then could you pull up that, go to their website and pull up the tentative, the updated one? It should be under their CPRSD, and I believe it's under finance. And then budget information on the left. And then the tentative presentation. And then this is February 9th update. And if we can keep going, and it's right there. So went from a 5% increase down to a 3.42. Yep. And then pause there for a second. Good, next.
Town assessments are, we got 5%.
Okay, keep going to the Dalton breakdown, or the town breakdown. New positions, go back to the side, see if that still, that still holds true. Next, next, next. You don't read there, Alyssa, right there. So our operating is where we, 61% of the overall budget, net base department number of students in the school. I believe that's over five year old on average, if I'm not mistaken. And then pause there for a second. So our FY '23 approved net town assessment of 8.8 million is now at 9.1. So we have a variance of 220,000, 2.48%.
Much better.
Much better than the initial.
Yeah.
Right? So. And then the capital budget town assessments, again, variance, the last variance was 24, now we're at 28. And then pause there, okay. So thoughts, questions? Any concern?
I actually called for everyone else today, some questions answered. If you were second, it may be even lower than that. You know, 1% something increase, so.
Any more juice we can squeeze from the orange would be appreciated, that's for sure.
So is the second budget mostly a result of getting real numbers in instead of conservative estimates?
Any problems from the state? Mr. Lacatelle, can you confirm that? Are the numbers?
The biggest, there are a lot of little changes, but the largest one was the better estimate of Chapter 70. Greg has worked with other, with people at the state, and this is their prediction of what it might be. We won't have the final ones until mid-March. And that's, that's true of the minimum required local contribution. Right now, that's still an estimate. That could change, but we won't know until mid-March. But it's the best estimate now, and that's the major change from the initial budget, which is the first set of numbers that you showed.
Any questions from the staff?
Well, I don't know that it'll be, to be answered here today, but I'm curious why such a large increase in property insurance. If I remember correctly, is it 15% increase? And then there was...
Well, it's the new building.
So the new building?
The new buildings that...
And the previous fiscal year budget was a partial year for the new building, is that right? Is that why it's higher?
I believe, I believe so, but I'm not sure.
Okay, Alyssa, we could just note that question.
Just for clarification, I mean, I'm not, the number is the number. Where do we get our insurance? This is MIIA. What does that stand for?
That's the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association. It is an agent that provides access to insurance for, I'd say, about half maybe of the Commonwealth's cities and towns. So it's a large aggregation.
It's an aggregation.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Bill?
Can you, any questions?
I have, I actually have kind of two questions. The first one is, we've always, and I see that it's quite close to it, but didn't quite percent increase overall budget, not, not what's being sent to the town of Dalton, but in general.
Can you pull up that slide?
Yeah, I think you're right, I think it's 3.24.
Yeah. And the concern there is that we, we all try to live under the guise of Proposition Two and a Half. And Proposition Two and a Half is 2.5% increase in your budget plus new growth. Well, for many years now, new growth in the town of Dalton, of course, has been pretty anemic. And one thing that we've tried to work with is to, because the school district is such a large portion of our budget, is to try to get an understanding as to how come that number continues to be, we struggle to get to that number. And if we, if we can strive to get to that number, that is going to help not only us, because keep in mind that that percentage rate is present, is being presented to us, that's, the overall budget goes up that much. So, okay, they're getting us for 2.5% this year, but what happens when we get a 4% next year? Because we have, enrollment goes up, those things happen, I get it. But we're going to pay on that 3.5%. Whether we like it or not, it's going to be there. So that's why, for all of these years, for as many years as I've been involved with the finance committee, that's been pretty steadfast in my assessment of the school district's budget, is that we need to try to, you know, we can manage to come in real low when we're looking for something, but in other years, we managed to come in, this isn't high by any stretch of imagination, it's this high, I don't, it's, I'm not, but it would be good for the school district to kind of attempt to hit that number more accurately.
It's actually on the website, side, Alyssa.
And the next, the next concern is when we, we look at the numbers, we want to, we kind of look, we wanted to look at actual revenue numbers, which show up on page three of this, of this, the tentative budget, and then all of the previous budgets, they all end up about in the same area. But what would be interesting to see for us, or for me, and I'll assume many of the other people on the committee, is what are the actual revenues that they, that they've been able to garner within the district?
From prior year?
From prior years.
Yes.
And, and I would be curious what those are and how they're being allocated, for lack of a better way to put it. So that those are some of the concerns. One last one is, and I, quite frankly, don't have a real good handle on how it works, but it's the excess and deficiency revenue side of the equation. How is that, first off, utilized? And secondly, is there a way, it's, excess and deficiency seems to me to be going in odd directions. And this is only because excess and deficiency acts very much like the town's free cash, only there are many restrictions on excess and deficiencies, as where free cash has far fewer restrictions in the town's respect, because it's a budgetary item. So when it comes down to the E and D, I can't understand why the E and D is climbing, getting larger. When we're in the kind of financial climate that we're in, one would think that the E and D would be going down.
Yep.
Because things are getting more expensive. We have employees, insurance, we have many other things that are climbing at a rather astronomical rate. You would think that the E and D would be coming down. So I, I'm a little concerned, not in a bad way, I suppose, if E and D is going up, that means it's a revenue source. But again, I don't understand how it is used, I do understand how it has arrived at, so.
Mr. Lacatelle, any comments on that at all?
Sure, I have comments on everything. The E and D, you're right, is like free cash. We generate about 1.3 million free cash, which is money that's budgeted and not expended. And that's been fairly consistent, I mean, it might be 1.2, 1.5, I think. This one is the largest it's been in some time. But it's been pretty consistent over probably a decade. And it simply throws, flows through the budget. I mean, what's not expended is credited for the following year, and that's what's shown on the revenue sheet. Almost everything that's not expended is used to, used as revenue for the following year, and it essence decreases the, the assessment on the towns, for example, in the tentative budget, it's 1.2 million dollars. Last year was, well, this year it's 1.249, last year was 1.194. You know, it's been fairly consistent. And as far as the restrictions, I'm not sure what you mean by the restrictions. We can't, we don't want more than, we can't have more than 5% at any time. If it exceeds that, it can't exceed that. We go, it goes right back to you, to the towns, if it exceeds 5%. But I, we give guidelines for the use of excess and efficiency every year. And this, when we spend 1.2 million this year, that will leave at the end of the fiscal year, $250,000 in our free cash for excess and deficiency, which is, some people think that's pretty low. But anyway, that's, that's one source of revenue that's been fairly consistent year to year. I, I hope that answers the question on the E and D. And as far as prior years go, that's, I, I think you mentioned state income, and that is largely in Chapter 70, that's the biggest source. And this year, we're estimating, this is the number that's estimated at over $9 million. You know, that's in every single budget, we show that, every single adopted budget last year, it was 8.8. And actually, we do show it, I guess, Bill asked the question. It's the adopted number is what we actually receive that, no, that's the actual budget that we receive. So, so that's, that's the history. I mean, you can go farther back, but that, it's right there. I don't, I don't know what additional district you'd like to see. And as far as the use, I mean, it's that line, and it's, it's income, it's used the same as, you know, town assessments. So I hope I answered that question.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lacatelle. Bill?
Thank you, thank you very much, Dick. It was, that's much appreciated. And that was the, honestly, that did answer most of my questions. The only question that kind of remains is the, I know you're working hard to target that number. Is there, are there things in the budget that could be used to target that 2.5% that we speak of each year?
The school committee has some flexibility, yeah, sure, just as the town does.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just that, that's generally what the town, we're, we're bound under law to, by law that was put in place by the taxpayers of Commonwealths in Massachusetts. They, they told us that we have to live within those guidelines. And considering the, the percentage, which I believe is well over 55% of our real estate taxes in the town of Dalton, that's a big nugget, and it'd be appreciated if the school district could kind of focus in on that number for all of the towns. You know, it's, like I say, I can speak for the town, the town of Dalton, as far as I'm concerned, is good, the way that it's come to us. But when you look, kind of start looking at the big picture side of that, that number actually comes back to bite us the next year and the year after.
And that balloon could increase at any given time, depending on enrollment over that five-year average, so.
Exactly. So it can, it can, all of a sudden, we can end up, oh geez, now we're paying for that 3.5% instead of sit back here saying, ah gee, that's kind of cool, we just got a little one on our side, but now we're going to get a 10%, and that kind of thing. So it's, that's kind of where I'm at with the, the whole thing, is, if we can kind of level out the peaks and valleys of this budget, that would be greatly appreciated from a finance viewpoint.
Those are certainly valid comments. I urge you to make those comments at the public hearing on Thursday night. I mean, the entire school committee ought to hear those viewpoints. You know, certainly I've heard them before, and, but it wouldn't hurt to say it again.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly...
I think you and I have been having this conversation for many, many years.
It's exactly, exactly purpose what we have.
But the one thing, the one thing that I wish you wouldn't, there's the one thing we can't control. We can control the 3.82% to some extent, but the variation is, is beyond our control. It's largely driven by the state's minimum required contribution and the regional agreement. We just, you know, I'll sign up, I'll, 3.82 is me, but the 2.48, the Dalton, is this year, and the over 6% to Becken and Covington this year, I'm not going to take responsibility for that. Those are entirely beyond, beyond our control.
Thank you, Mr. Lacatelle. Any other questions from finance committee members? Any other thoughts?
So the number at this point is 3.42?
3.42.
Mark?
No, it's, as far as the assessments to the towns, the average assessment or the total would be 3.22.
Is that pretty close to the real number? Or how, how far off are we, you agree?
Yeah, Dick, do you think that's pretty much a real number? Do you think there's any adjustment up or down on that number, on that assessment?
Well, there's, there's a kind of a gentleman's agreement. I don't think it's cast in concrete, but it will not, it will not exceed the 3.82.
So the, I think the open issue, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Lacatelle, is that the state is still finalizing that budget, which comes out mid-March. So if everything stays true to where they are now, we're good, but if something blows up in that time, you know, hopefully it's not going to be the case, but hopefully it's
that's how they sold it to everyone, so.
In addition to that, they've also just recently, this was only two weeks ago, they've made a major league expansion on legalized gambling, which is mobile phone betting and sports betting. It's supposed to bring in a bunch of dollars.
My couple of bucks on the eagle, so that's.
Yeah, me too. Anyway, I think that's our way to go.
Mr. Lacteau?
Joe, yes. Joe, can I elaborate a little more?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
If you look at your listed increases, one of them is the temporary band. And I think when you hit the pitch the next few days, whenever that happens, a large amount of the 3-point, or the gross increase is the temporary bandwidth, which is related to the new school. And if you were to take part of that off, or even all of it, Bill can calculate what the increase to the town would be in that instance. And I think we're, to the total, the total or the average to the town would be around the 2.5%. And incidentally, Bill, until last year, we were at 2.5% for a good number of years. You know, we did work hard at that. And we achieved that for quite a few years. And that's, we did a better job than a lot of districts did.
Yeah, those are the years that I voted for the budget. I generally don't vote, but I don't, generally, it's difficult to get me to support a budget when it's over 2.5%.
And again, I'm talking about the total.
Yeah, yeah, the total, yeah.
I can't control what individual towns.
Correct. And I fully, and I fully understand that. And that's, and that's kind of why I focused over the years, I have focused on the overall budget being 2.5% on the overall budget. Because that's, all the towns are under that same constraint. So whether it's.
Right.
Everybody agree with that as a shared message for the public hearing?
So can we specifically ask about operational transportation reimbursement as well?
Yes.
Sure.
What percentage are we at now? I mean, we dangled around 80% for, or down around 80% for years.
I think the assumption for this budget, and it's, again, it's over and only an assumption that'll change in mid-March, the assumption is like 70, 71%.
Good point. We should address that issue in our joint letter too, that we deal with the transportation issue is. Where we were guaranteed 100% since day one, and that was in 1961.
I don't go that back, that's right you.
Are there other comments?
I go back to that.
Want to make sure everybody has time for voice here, so as well. The one question we did have on transportation that I did ask in a prior meeting with the school committee, and I forget exactly which meeting it was at, but it was around transportation and our cost of transportation. And was it by miles, was it by students, was it by, you know, what is the equation here at the end of the day? Actually, by number of buses. And then they use the student population on that as an operational expense, like the other operational expenses. But I was thinking it might be miles or time or something like that, but it wasn't. Yeah, so. Okay, if there aren't any other questions on the budget, I'm not sure if we want to take, I think we just, a gentleman, gentlewoman's handshake that the shared message is of try and keep it at 2.5 or below as one message. And what are the other key messages?
Contact your legislatures.
Contact our legislatures. Anything else that we're missing for now?
See the avenues we have.
Okay, all right. If there's no objection, we have a seven-town meeting tomorrow. Bill, you run that email if you can attend, that would be great. If somebody wants to attend in your place, or how would these schedules work? That's fine too. And then the public hearing is on the 16th.
What time is that meeting on the 16th?
Mr. Lacteau, I think that's at 7 o'clock, the public hearing.
That would be 7 o'clock, yes. Right, 7 o'clock.
Okay. Any other comments? Moving on to ARPA real quick? Okay, great. Mr. Lacteau, please feel free to join us, or, but thank you for joining that part of the conversation. Really appreciate your, your sharing knowledge and expertise for sure. Okay, everybody should have, listen, did the ARPA list go out to the finance committee members too? Okay, so everybody should have a list of the ARPA funds that we have, the total, the project total, it was 1.8, and then we had some planned changes or revised numbers, which came out to the spend of 1.4. Mr. Hutchinson, what's the total received from the state? Oh, 1.9 is available at the top line.
Yes.
Sorry, completely missed that. And so you see the list of projects that we've approved through the Select Board to fund through this ARPA funds. A couple of big ones, the, some paving projects, especially Dalton Division Road. That's kind of a Band-Aid project until we get to the main mass DOT project in 1718, not 1718, '27, '28. The sewer, we had an assessment done on the sewers, and we, rather than taking the full 760 with the finance committee's assistance, we put in $380,000 from ARPA, and then we used $380,000 from the stabilization fund for that program. And then we also funded the new ladder truck for our fire chief. He came into Dalton, and we had some issues with our ladder truck. And so that's now coming through. It's a used ladder truck that should be coming any day now, or?
By, for as simple as I can.
Okay, great. And then you see the list there. So the, this evening, we have remaining 471,506 of the ARPA dollars remaining. So we wanted to also get your thoughts and ideas about what to do with that, those ARPA dollars. In a meeting this afternoon with Ms. Hutchinson and Pat Pettit, we're reviewing the town hall renovation project. And Pat has requested us if we could hold $150,000 of the ARPA dollars just for contingency. We anticipate, because we had two delays in that project, one was a long time ago. And then the other one was the more recent one. We said, let's delay it because of the winter that we're going to experience, and there's some costs in that delay. Rather than having pipes burst or things happen, we made that decision to delay that project, and it kicks off on March 13th. Right, so with a projected completion date by July, I think it is.
Yeah, but projected by the end of June, but we're certainly aware that there may be things that happen that push it up beyond that. Also, I'll just mention that later in this meeting, we'll also be considering a request from the police department for $53,000 to replace their tasers. They will be able to explain that much better than I. But it's a five-year contract, which is also, it would have to be voted by town meeting anyway, but that's a, that also requires town meeting approval. It's a five-year contract. And that makes me a little unsure as to, I mean, we can approve the money from ARPA, but I think we still have to approve it from town meeting in order to make a five-year commitment.
For contract, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll just pause there and see what feedback anybody has Select Board Finance Committee, but just discussion purposes and what we may want to do for town. Or Tom, if you have ideas, suggestions to facilitate?
Yeah, well, first, it may be possible to redo that agreement for, that five-year agreement and push it down two, three years so that we could do it all in one go. So again, that's 53,000 of those dollars. In the beginning, I had a number of people meet, including our financial team and department heads. And we did review how much ARPA money we were getting and what the town's needs were. And at that time, we decided to spend it on infrastructure with a focus on engineering. That was the ideal. Because we knew that if we could get a lot of projects engineered, more projects might be coming down the line through things like the Infrastructure Act and other federal spending. And if we had projects that were ready to go, then we'd be much better able to get those. So the idea was to front-load that. We did some engineering. We gave some money to the water district for engineering. We're having engineering done on repairing our sewers. We had additional road engineering done. But we have spent a lot just on infrastructure equipment as well. Highway equipment, police equipment. We spent some money on COVID. And we got a grant to do, to connect all the town's buildings with fiber optic cable. And we now expect that to be $4,000 more than we had anticipated. So we put some money in for that as well. In addition, recently, the Select Board decided to open up some of the funding to our culture and recreation and, culture and open space and recreation categories of spending. These are the 500 accounts and the 600 accounts. Culture includes council and agent, veteran services, cultural commission. And the open space and recreation is pretty much, pretty much that. We offered mini grants to all of the funded town departments or accounts within that, and received out of $50,000 allowed by the Select Board grants totaling $31,257. That's the bottom line here. So that brings us up to now. I'm sure that when Bud Hall presents the new program we have to organize our road maintenance, when that first came out, they told us just how many millions it would take to get the roads into tip-top shape. It was pretty clear we wouldn't be able to do that. But it does also provide some guidance to priorities. One thing it does not have is traffic counts. So right now, we're trying to balance the priorities as that program has it with the knowledge of how many people actually use the road so that we can get the worst roads that most people used fixed first. So that's where the town is in that process. There's no question that we could use the amount of money that's left and more just in paper. But we did want to give you that briefing on how we started to make the decisions, how we went through them, what we found means that the town actually worked. These are all things that we have avoided paying for through capital stabilization or raisin appropriate in our capital articles at town meetings. So that's a great plus for us. And we're left with a certain amount, probably about a quarter of what we were originally granted. We have to spend this all by the end of next fiscal year. And that will be the, that will be the benefit to the town. And so we have probably reasonably a little under $400,000 left to spend. If we go ahead and fund the police requests now and end up losing, I would project we will actually use about $40,000 of that $150,000 that the building superintendent is asking to be reserved. So that brings us down to just under $400,000 left. And we wanted to make you aware of the decision-making process and the decisions that have been made so far. And open up any questions, your comments, or suggestions?
In 2019, there was a large group convened to pull together the municipal, well, yeah, municipal vulnerability plan. And in that, there were several suggested projects. Has the municipal vulnerability plan been renewed for projects that might be consistent with the enhanced of ARPA?
No, I have not done that. If you have any that would, I, in general, geotechnical projects are relatively expensive. Though the engineering can be definitely achievable. So, you know.
For instance.
If you, if you, sorry, or some, it sounds as though you have, you might even know what they are off the top of your head.
One in particular that might be expensive, do a lot to eat, is the suggestion that Center Pond, which presents a long-term flood risk, might be dredged. The committee made that as a recommendation. I don't know how advantageous that would be, but to do an engineering study on it, consider those monies as potentially something to expend to take the future load off of Dalton might be worthwhile.
Just, it has been talked about in the past. I just want to mention this. Senator Pratt, Weston's Pond, etc., is private property. It's owned. Anything the town wants to do, it is not going to happen. If it wanted to create a company, Oregon's, Prentice, or whatever it named, the company is now.
Sure, Ken.
Positive. So great, nobody had, they also own a dam.
I know they own a dam. That's why they made it fixed. Maybe it's a great expense to fix that.
It might be a good idea to take some of these, like the sustainability, and have our green committee make some recommendations and have some other committees make some recommendations, maybe the planning board or things of that nature. And certainly highway for roads and, you know, what we may do with these dollars.
It's certainly true that Pomeroy Manor is at risk from flooding, from Center Pond.
Yeah, so I know.
You had your problems over this?
So I guess, you know, just for the finance committee, what are your recommendations or thoughts about the balance we have here and how we should manage it? Because we kind of went through this at kind of a reactionary stage. And it's, okay, these are important, these are must-do things we need to do, or opportunities. But now it's like, pause. Okay, now what are we doing with the remainder of the dollars?
I must admit, I know there's one kind of need, but I'm not sure. I'm on the recycling commission. Presently, we rent the equipment that we have up there for compaction of the trash and the compaction of the paper. And I'm not sure what the fees are off the top of my head when it comes down to that. But the equipment is aging, and it's aging rapidly, as I understand. And we struggle even on occasion to have the people we're renting it from show up to fix it on occasion. That company shall remain nameless at this point. But at any rate, utilizing a portion of it to maybe replace one of those, at least one of those pieces of equipment might be advantageous for us. It might.
Okay.
Just to get the, kind of get the ball rolling. A good program over there takes a great deal of years to get it to where we, where the vision is.
It's making great progress right now as far as service, new services.
It's making awesome progress. For the few years that we've been managing it, well, I think it's over two now.
No, just one.
Is it just one?
Not quite.
So we've made great strides in less than a year. And greater strides can be made over time. There are towns, towns the size of ours, have much more comprehensive than we have. Ours is pretty nice, it's just there. So we should probably be thinking about that. At least have that out there. If it's, if the funds are available. If the funds are available, we might want to take advantage of that. Give me an idea of what kind of value you're comfortable with. Last word, one of them is, one of the compactors is around $160,000.
No, much less.
Oh, it's much less?
Yes. That would be to replace all the equipment there.
We actually discussed this at the Select Board meeting probably about a year ago. The reason why we didn't go for it, we wanted to get the numbers and see how we're making out before we decided to go out and purchase our own equipment. It's exactly what you're saying. Now leasing the equipment, now we own it. And if it's not providing what it's supposed to be providing, now we own the equipment. We didn't want to dig ourselves in until we started getting the hard numbers back from the recycling, from the whole lot.
The whole operation, yeah.
And as we know, it takes time to build it, to get it so people are feeling comfortable with it. I think that's been, a little bit of an uphill battle in town for a couple of reasons. And that's not for this forum to talk about. But we're bulldozing through it.
We'll get a great committee working on it.
Yeah, the committee's working on bulldozing that through that part of it. But it just, that was one of those things that it's a cog in the wheel of the town. And to be, to have that kind of thought process sitting out there, that would be kind of the thing. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You mentioned that you were thinking that maybe the Green Committee should review some of the MVP and make some suggestions to the Select Board. Do you want to put a little structure to that?
Well, actually, a great question. Because what's brewing in my mind right now is, because I think it's important, this conversation has been very helpful from the CBRSD budget and then looking at the ARPA funds. And, you know, just, I'm thinking off the top of my head, honestly, is should we have a sub, you know, a sub-working group, a couple of members of Finance, a couple of members of Select Board to advise our town manager where we should spend the rest? That approach. You know, and then we see the Green Committee, we see the transfer station, that'll be helpful to you. It's okay. Now it's a recommendation by that shared sub-work group. And then it comes to the Select Board final approval based upon ARPA.
Did you say earlier that this money has to be spent by June 30th?
No, by the end of next fiscal year.
Oh, by the next fiscal year?
What fiscal year is it? Are you going to the federal?
I think it's ours. Good point. Probably October instead of July.
So would it be this October, '23, or would it be next October, '24?
Next.
The next. So we got 2025, October 1st is February.
24. 24.
Or 23?
24, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. So we got, what are your targets?
I'm just a little concerned because it put a committee together.
Oh, no, it has to be a quick committee. It has to be a quick decision committee, yeah. But we can burn through it pretty quickly, for sure.
No doubt.
You indicated that. Just because things, it's like money under the mattress now. Things arise, where it's just a police department issue, $50,000, $50,000 right there. So this money could go rapidly. And discretion of the town manager and with the courage of the Select Board. And I think the policy we got in place now is that we evaluate every request as it comes forward and see if we can afford to take it out of the ARPA plans.
Mr. Hutchinson?
One concern that had been raised earlier was that we didn't necessarily want to invest in the transfer station until we know what the seller's doing. But since then, I've been thinking along slightly different lines, which is, it's good public policy to reduce the amount of waste that gets thrown away as municipal solid waste. So we can maintain our recycling program. I would like to see a compost program, which would take out the majority of the weight, which is what we get billed on, is tons, for disposal, not for hauling, for hauling its bulk, but for disposal, it's tons. And those are good public policy reasons for doing something for the town, to allow everyone to get rid of things that are not, that we don't need to throw away, that we can actually recycle or compost, work with local composters or farmers and things like that. And work to reduce the amount that's actually flowing through, which is not something that's ever going to happen if there's someone with an incentive to have more.
And that can be a good exercise for the Waste Management Committee to look at as an option, put management in that business, management in that service, at the end of the day, and see what type of impact it can make on that.
The organic waste also has a significant greenhouse gas effect. So the Green Committee has also got great interest in the composting projects as well.
All right, so next step on this? We can put out, I don't know, if we just make a recommendation out for each chair, recommend two people, I guess? Want to do that? Would that, yeah? Yeah, look for volunteers first, then we'll, Mr. Boyle?
I'll do it.
And Mr. Bishop? Any directions? Okay, we'll get out to, we beat you to the punch. You want to go to?
I can't be at any more committees.
Dr. Earl?
Just that?
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you. That's all really, if anybody else has any topics, we can't go far off the agenda, but anything on the topics, two topics we talked about, CBRSD budget or? Was this helpful?
Yes.
Great, excellent, all right.
When are you thinking that you'd want the first meeting?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Hutchinson because it's going to be helpful to him, right? To look at the dollars and, okay.
I'll convene something within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, everybody. We are going to go into the full agenda. Feel free to stick around. It's always entertaining here at Select Board, so. But thank you all for joining. And definitely call us if you guys have something you need our attention on. But thank you all.
I'm sure Will had any questions. The deliberations are beginning.
Exactly. Awesome. All right, let's get into, we do have our attorney, Katie Klein, I believe is on the line. And thank you for, thank you for hanging on the line there, Attorney Klein. Are you there? There you go.
Good evening.
So the next discussion is the barn property and next steps. I like to just start off by, I emailed everybody, literally, I think it was like 5:20 this evening, with new information that I got at 5:03. I'll just start off by commenting that I received the RFP, I received our packet on Saturday. And I looked at the RFP and I raised some concerns, some legal concerns, some contractual, structural concerns on the RFP. And I'd like to propose or motion that we, what I receive as new information is that our discussion about the structure of that RFP can be an executive session. So I'd like to motion that we table the RFP portion till our next meeting and put on the executive session agenda. Do I have that right, Attorney Klein?
That's correct. Under Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, it can be an executive session, in my opinion.
Because there's some structure in that agreement that just wouldn't sit, wouldn't, I think, work well from a contractual RFP language perspective that I had concerns of. I'm not sure if everybody else had a chance to review that.
Mr. Chair?
Well, we'll get into discussion in a minute. So just a motion that's to table it till the next meeting for executive session.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
You can't discuss it. You asked to table it, there's no discussion.
Oh, okay.
Still second.
Okay.
Do you have to have a vote?
Roll call vote?
Wait, wait. No discussion?
No, it's a table.
He made a motion to table it, John.
Oh, man, come on.
We can vote against the tabling.
And it's just the?
Just the RFP.
RFP?
Yep. You can still have discussions on the barn property and what we're doing, but not from the RFP perspective.
Why didn't you make the motion before we could discuss it?
So that's why we're going to vote, if you vote no, John.
Oh, you can vote no. Hopefully, the rest of the board votes no. I mean, it's a contract, it's open to the public right now, that's all it's talking.
So let's take a vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, motion and second. Roll call vote. Mr. Strope?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Esco?
No.
Mr. Boyle?
No.
Chair Dever, yes. Okay, so motion fails. Okay, so we can openly talk about the RFP.
Well, I think the thing is, I don't know why we're doing that. I don't know why we, there's no.
Because I have concerns about it.
Okay, I understand you have concerns, but this hasn't been expressed to anybody else. We don't know anything about it. It's just straight up.
Because we've got it Saturday.
Doesn't mean we have to talk about it, but I just, I go and know because I want to know why. Maybe we can hear from the attorney why we should do that.
Yeah, so I can explain why. I think I, I've come to explain why. In the RFP, it basically states that whoever the bidder is must have an agreement to buy the Windsor property. As part of the RFP.
At closing.
At closing, contractual. Which makes that barn property quite valuable to the current owner.
Current owner, is it town of Dalton?
No, not on the Windsor property. If the owner of the Windsor property.
I don't know where this discussion's going, bud. This RFP, well, I'm certain the town manager spent hours on it over the weekend just so we could have it tonight. And several lawyers from the Attorney General, the Inspector General's office and our town council have prepared it.
I don't think they, I don't think the, I don't think the officer inspector general pre-cared the RFP.
They didn't weigh in on it. And that's the conditions that they.
I don't.
Joe, if this is your problem, we should air it out in public. So we get the lawyer right here.
Well, my motion fails, so we can't air it in public now.
Yeah, I think you should put it to her. You got a question?
We also don't have to discuss the RFP right now. We can discuss the barn property in general and what town council has learned in her perspective.
Well, if we vote to approve, move it forward, then you've got the RFP to move forward. Are you asking for approval of the RFP this evening?
No. In general, the board wouldn't have to approve an RFP, but this one is really unusual. I'm certainly interested in people's comments on it, and I think the town council.
Let me, let's, so based upon the information that was delivered in our packet, let me ask my first question to our attorney. Do we have to state in our RFP that the Windsor property is a condition of owning the parcels owned by Dalton?
Well, the way that the agricultural preservation restriction is written and the way that the Department of Agricultural Resources is construing it is the, it has to be all four parcels, the three in Dalton and the parcel in Windsor need to be under common ownership.
Is there, is there any way we can, the town, the, under Mass General law, can we exit the current structure by legislative action?
I believe that the cleanest route through this is probably through special legislation. And that would be to have the Windsor parcel disconnected, so to speak, from the Dalton, the Dalton parcels. However, I also think MDR, if I may use that, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, would probably object to that. So I'm, I'm not sure it would go through.
Did the owner of the parcels receive state money as a grant or as a payment for the parcels to put under the protective structure?
My guess is that they were probably paid, but I don't have the preservation restriction in front of me now, but it would say that in that document.
Yeah, they were paid $260,000.
There was consideration paid. I can't imagine that they would put it underneath, in a restriction without being paid, but I don't recall the compensation amount.
I can report that the compensation was $260,000.
Okay. Which was a lot of money.
James Byrne, who fell deceased, and his son-in-law, James Byrne.
So, but that's my overall concern is that the structure of the, of what we need to step through right now is that the two are so tightly connected.
To be honest, these are the same arguments. This is the same thing we heard six years ago.
Now we have a solution, it's being blocked. I just do not understand this. That's the most clear document I have ever seen, legally written, instruction in how to resolve this complex problem that's been going on for 14 years. As far as that dangler piece of Windsor, somebody has to acquire it. What do we care? What do we care what they paid for it? They paid $1 or $200,000. That's their private business. It only stipulates that somebody has it under their control by the time of the standard, by the time of the closing.
Mr. Hutchinson, I sent you some proposed legal language. I'm trying to find it at the moment, but was that reviewed? So let me, let me, oh, here it is. Attorney Klein, if we could change that section I'm concerned about to, "Successful bidder will be liable to clear all issues with MDR. Any bidder who has a purchase and sales agreement with the Windsor parcel and the date of the bid is not eligible to bid unless that PNS is voided prior to the bid date and time." Is that?
Voided?
I'm asking.
I'm sorry, is that void? What was the question?
If they have a current.
I heard the language.
Yeah, if they have a current purchase and sale, could that be voided prior to the bid date and time?
Well, certainly, they could void it if they have an agreement already. I don't know how, I don't know what would be happening behind the scenes. They could void the contract and say, "We don't currently have a contract." And of course, they could not currently have a contract and then re-enter into it. I mean, I have no idea, but I may just speculate.
Yeah, and I assume that the Windsor parcel can't be sold today or under a contract because it is part of that APR. They would have to buy the other three parcels. It would be the same situation for that owner, correct?
It would be the same situation.
So there would be nothing?
Although the irony here is that there is already a severance of ownership because the town has owned it for quite a while, which I don't completely understand, but that's.
I think the frustrating part is literally we beat this horse to death, literally, over and over. I think everybody's been clear. We just, we'd like the attorneys to figure out how to do this and move us forward. We've had this thing over bid before. Everybody knows what we want to do. We just need, and it becomes a hot topic, then it dies off a little bit. Then it becomes a hot topic, then it's like this brand-new hot subject again. No, trust me. I dove deep into this many, many times. We just need the attorney to figure out how we can move forward and let's go, and let's do it.
Has KPLA reviewed the RFP?
Yes.
Yes.
And, but let me just clarify. Would it be allowable to include Joe's language in the RFP?
I believe so. Yes, in my opinion, yes.
That is, I believe, why the chair is asking for an executive session, to go over that proposal.
That's correct.
Do you reiterate, re-speak what that exactly means? It was confusing to me.
It basically means that any, we have to have an open bid process for, to get the best value of that land for the town. So I wonder if this would be one bidder or three bidders?
Wait, this has all been resolved. It was the town manager's question. He resolved that with the town attorneys and the inspector general, that if we sell that thing, the land to a party that has secured a, has secured control over the Windsor parcel, it's perfectly legal as long as we put it in the condition. Joe, what you're doing is sabotaging all this work, 14 years. I don't understand it at all.
John, I'm not sabotaging anything.
Yeah, you are.
I'm asking a very specific question.
No, you're advocating for that. You're sabotaging this, the town manager worked on this for a week. I'm directing from this board, and he came up with an excellent proposal. And you haven't seen it until five o'clock today. I had it since last Thursday. I read it four times.
So you're, so we can't have, so the, if there is an owner of the Windsor parcel right now?
Yeah.
We get one bid.
According to the condition set.
And that one bid could be whatever it is. We accept or reject it?
For the Windsor parcel, what's it got to do with us?
Not for the Windsor parcel, but the Dalton parcel.
It's set in the bid, the minimum bid of $243,000. That's a pretty goddamn good chunk of land. The Select Board set a price up three years ago. The SLIP board set a price up three years ago of one thousand dollars an acre.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a lot more. This is a deal of a lifetime.
If you have an open bid process, then you should have an open bid process, right?
This is a special circumstance. This is why all these lawyers have agonized over this for years. This is why they came up with this proposal, and now you're, you're blowing it up.
I'm not blowing up.
Money!
John, I'm not blowing up because you guys.
Let's go over fourteen years.
You already voted down my motion, so I'm not blowing up anything.
Yeah, you are. You want an executive session. You should withdraw that support to town manager. You told me in my email the other day to stand down and let the town manager do his job. Wait a minute.
That's right.
And he did his job.
That's right.
And now you're questioning it.
No, I'm not questioning.
Yeah, you are.
I'm questioning.
You're questioning his proposal.
I'm questioning some of the content in the, in the RFP, John.
Joe is making, proposing an addition.
Yeah.
To what I had sent out.
Clean up one section, one paragraph.
As that, and Town Council says it's a legal addition. The question is, does the board want to discuss that, and the chair believes that that would be best done in an executive session?
Which was rejected, so I'll make the motion.
Well, but, but I don't think the circumstances were fully understood.
Right.
Oh, hey, I wanted to get more clarity, and Mark, that's why I supported, you know, that's why I said no.
So that's, that's the reason that I, and, and.
Mr. Bishop?
I want this piece of land sold like everybody else here. But I know some circumstances, how this arrangement, the person that wants to procure it, the person that owns the parcel in Windsor happens to be an employee of this person. And I don't know how fair that is to other people that may have an interest in this. So how do we make it fair?
It might be better to have this discussion in executive session.
I'm not sure what purpose that would serve at this point because all the issues have been.
Have been raised.
Disgusted and open. I, I, it's up to, it's up to you, but I'm not. Certainly, you could do it in an executive session, and, and I think at this point, I'm, I'm not sure there is a minimum bid in the RFP. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes, there is.
There isn't? Okay, okay. I, I wanted to be sure of that. Because I, I don't think it was in the version I saw. But I, I mean, it's, I mean, the, the town.
Well, whatever IFP goes out, we'll have a minimum bid of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Unless the board wants to raise that.
So there's no need for a board vote on the RFP, Tom? And you're not seeking one tonight?
I, uh, I would appreciate policy guidance from the board on the matter you've raised.
Mr. Chairman, can you read the language again and can the town's attorney advise us on that?
Okay, here it is, so.
She has advised that it's legal to include.
I understand. I want to ask what her recommendation is.
Should I read the language that's in there now?
No, what you proposed.
I'm trying to find, back to Dan's point, the language that's in there now.
I've got it here.
Give a session.
Is this talking about quality requirements?
Yeah, under the quality requirements, it currently states, "The successful proposer must have control of either by owning or having a valid and enforceable contract to acquire a parcel in Windsor, being Assessor's Map 12-39, containing four acres, more or less, which parcel is also subject to the APR affecting the property subject to this RFP. The successful proposer must own the Windsor parcel prior to or concurrently with the closing on the property. The intent is for all the parcels subject of the APR to be under single ownership."
That's the current language.
That's the current language. Well, my proposed language is, "Successful bidder will be liable to clear all issues with MDR. Any bidder who has a purchase and sales agreement with the Windsor parcel on the date of the bid is not eligible to bid unless that PNS is voided prior to the bid date and time," which then makes us eligible, or there's an opportunity to receive multiple bids and let them go fight out what the Windsor parcel is.
So they would have to back out of the Windsor, uh, property in order to purchase the Dalton property.
Yeah, our minimum, minimum bid on it. In order to bid on it. We'll get one, if somebody owns that property now in Windsor, we get one bid. Minimum bid two forty-three, which we'll need to accept.
That's a good point.
No competition.
Well, it doesn't, it, forget about the deal side of it, John.
Money?
It means that it, we're not allowing other people who may have an interest in purchasing this property to actually purchase it.
I don't think, I don't think there's possible.
Pay a greater amount of money.
Our attorneys are advising against this. The Inspector General advised against this. Any regard?
No.
I don't think.
I don't think anyone has advised against.
Well, let's ask the attorney.
The attorney has advised that it's legal.
This night, in, in your, uh, conversations with the Inspector General, as you noted in the, uh, RFP, is this the type of arrangement that was only, think that is possible at this point to resolve this one, eligible to?
I'm sorry, was that directed to me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, my understanding, we've had a couple of conversations with the IG's office. Um, my conversation was that if, um, if the property was, uh, if the town was aware that someone had a contract on the property, that that would be problematic. But if the town was not aware, um, uh, of a current contract, that that would be considered to be, um, competitive bidding. Um, I think this is a very, very difficult situation. Um, I understand why it maybe hasn't taken fourteen years, but it's, it's, it's very difficult to, um, determine which direction to go, but I do think that the chair's language wouldn't be added to. I think it would be in lieu of language that's there now. And I do think that that would be legal. I'm not sure what the end result would be. Um, it may be that an RFP would be issued and someone may come in and, um, you know, bid for the, the, the property in, uh, Dalton, and without having the ability to buy the Windsor property, they may not be able to, um, get, you know, have MDR sanction the transaction. I personally think that MDR is being unreasonable and has been for a long time, but that's just my personal opinion.
And, and legislative action would be unlikely, I think, because we need two-thirds, both in the House and Senate. What do you think?
It's not RFP number seven legislation, so, um, I'm not sure whether it would be a majority vote or not. Um, I'm not sure actually what the, the, um, you know, would be needed for it to pass. But with MDR, um, potentially are probably opposing it, I think it would be a problem.
So if I could have a, I'd like to make a motion to, um, change the paragraph that is originally in there that I read with the one I'm suggesting as a replacement.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, second, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle.
I strongly believe we should go with the proposal that has been prepared by the town manager, the inspector general, and our attorneys as being the best legal advice available in the Commonwealth, and not follow the advocacy of the chairman of this board, who is limited and only has redness since five o'clock by his own admission.
No, I read it Saturday, John. I'm going to ask a question.
I thought you sent your email.
No, I got new information in five oh three. I didn't read it in five oh three. I got new information.
All right. But Joe, I don't think you're in a position to change what has been legally determined to be the best solution to this problem.
So.
So I, I will never go for that.
Okay, that's fair. So is a motion, any further discussion? There's a motion on the table.
And has made an opinion as to what the best legal solution is.
If we're aware of an existing purchase and sale, uh, the town being aware.
That would be problematic.
And I think Mr. Boyle stated.
Mr. Boyle stated that many a times. There's a place, a agreement already in place.
And you say that this evening.
We, we do not have any proof.
That is problematic.
We don't have any proof.
But he says it's what's his thing.
I think, I think the attorney is aware that, and Mastar, was it Mastar, is aware that there is a accepted, uh, purchase and sale agreement in place. It has been for six months.
Attorney Klein, you?
Am I clear?
Yeah.
No. No, I'm not there.
Mr. Boyle, you think there's a PNS in place for the last six months, which now is problematic for the RFP according to our attorney? And now it's publicly stated, um, we can validate that, but even brings forward more reason to replace the paragraph with my suggested language to then be legally reviewed. There's a motion, there's a second, any further discussion? Here or none? Um, do we need roll call vote?
No, I do roll call anyway.
I'm sorry?
Request a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote requested by Mr. Stroh. Uh, Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Esco.
Yes.
Mr. Boyle.
Oh.
Mr. Vice Chair Bishop.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Mr. Hutchinson, we can hit that update and then we'll move the ball forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that discussion. All right, um, moving to seven, uh, employment ratification. Lisa Turner as COA Program Assistant and in Pre-Employment Physical. Ms. Hutchinson.
Yes, uh, you may recall, uh, the Executive Director of the Council and Agent came in to present this proposal to you. This position would be paid for about halfway by a grant and halfway by the town. Uh, we have a, an excellent applicant.
I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to thank Attorney Klein. I'll send her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is she, I don't think she's still there. I'm sorry, yeah, okay. If you can, can you send her a little email? No, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Hutchinson. That was very nice, but yeah.
So, uh, we're, we're ready now. Uh, we're, we're still, um, waiting for the results from the Pre-Employment Physical, but, uh, we would ask for your ratification for appointment, uh, uh, any successful, uh, Pre-Employment Physical.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Excellent.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I have a question, though. It has nothing to do with that. I thought the wine and cheese was going to be on today's agenda.
Oh, the wine and cheese permit. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's scheduled for the twenty-third.
Can we put that under items not in.
We can put that, we can put that under items not in, uh, within the last forty-eight hours. So we can address it tonight if you want to hang out for a bit, if that's okay. If there's, yeah, if there's no objection, we can, we can do that. No objection, okay. Number eight, committee appointment ratification.
Uh, I'm going to turn this over to Alyssa, who received the paperwork for it. My students has the recommendation of the Green Committee, Board Chair.
David Wazluski has recommended, uh, Antonio Pagliarulo, uh, to join the Green Committee. I've included his committee interest form, and David and the rest of the Green Committee are very excited to have him, so.
Great. Is there a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to appoint Antonio Pagliarulo to the Green Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Here or none?
Just note it's the effective date.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, motion, second, any discussion? Here or none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Number nine, GZA Geo-Environmental Update on Walker Brook. Ms. Hutchinson.
I do, we have Ms. Rosa Lee Tarvish on the, uh, on Zoom call with us. And, uh, it's been a long road ahead, but we're, we're coming into the final stretch here and, uh, looking forward to uh, hearing what is pretty close to a final product for engineering for the Walker Brook, uh, drainage project.
Fantastic. Rosa Lee, nice to see you again.
Hello. Yeah, I've just been, uh, working on my emails. Um, I have, uh, you know, a brief presentation to share, so let me, um, try to set that up. Let's see.
Hey, this is, uh. Who was that?
Can I have permission to share my screen?
Email and ask them if you want us to post that next agenda. Please.
You should be able to do it now.
That's pretty powerful.
Okay. Please, please excuse them from tonight, and we can move on to next agenda.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm assuming you can see the slides now?
Yes, thank you.
Um, all right, so I just want to go through some of the, um, data collection that we've been working on since we last spoke, and then we can talk about, um, or the plan for the culvert layout and next steps. Um, so we did conduct, uh, subsurface explorations. Um, the map on the right shows yellow pins. Um, those are the approximate locations of the boreings. So we did nine, uh, test boreings along the alignment on, in December, um, and those depths ranged from about seventeen to thirty-four feet below grade. Um, generally, shallow fill, um, overlying naturally deposited floodplain aludium in the area with groundwater at about ten to twenty feet below ground, uh, at the time of drilling. Um, and there were no significant obstructions encountered in the boreings. So generally, we're looking for, you know, conditions that we may encounter during construction, um, the potential for, um, you know, obstructions such as, uh, bedrock or, or out, bedrock outcrops or boulders that might, um, be difficult to work with during construction. Um, so, you know, in general, we want to just get a picture of, of what might be there. Um, you know, with groundwater, we may, we may be excavating that deep to ten, ten feet or lower, deeper, so we will, um, have to address management of groundwater during construction. We did do a wetland delineation, um, in October, and the, the red lines, uh, represent um, the outlining of the points that were flagged, both, you know, upstream of High Street and downstream of Main Street, and, um, you know, we pretty much have the, uh, the limits of the stream channel and, um, no BDW, no BDW, and then, you know, riverfront area extends, um, out from the street itself. Um, the alignment of the existing culvert is all underground, and so um, because of the, the length of culvert, there are no, um, you know, wetland resource areas along the alignment. Oh, it's here. I assume the screen is getting in the way. There we go, all right. Um, we enlisted hill, hill engineers to perform topographic survey. Um, they gave us a draft survey in January. Um, we've, I've spoken with Bud Hall and Bob Benlin, um, to review what's shown on the survey in terms of, um, water and sewer utilities. We want to make sure we understand where those are located. And so, you know, there have been some comments and edits that the surveyor is currently working on um, to finalize the layout of utilities. But we are continuing to work with what we have on the survey, but, and I'm hoping that I think it's reasonable that they will be able to finalize this survey, get that to us, um, in the next few weeks so that our, our drives will be based on that actual finalized survey. so that our drawings will be based on that actual finalized survey. I'm gonna jump to the... PDF. Let me just end this for now. There we go. So we've laid out the alignment of the proposed culvert using the draft survey that we have. This here is just an index sheet, but this thick dark line shows the proposed alignment coming down Field Street, running parallel to First Street within the open parcel. And I can get into why we're doing that and then coming down Glen and Ave. And then the culvert, the proposed culvert, there are two options that we're looking at for how it would reconnect to Walker Brook downstream, which would be, one would be to kind of come straight across down this slope, most likely with kind of a series of concrete structures to help convey the water down hill. So it would not be open, you know, along the ground surface. It would actually be in a pipe all the way down to where it discharges back into Walker Brook. The other potential option is to come along Main Street, kind of in the sidewalk to avoid interfering with the amount of utilities and try to limit disturbance in Main Street and reconnect the existing culvert where Walker Brook currently exists. So we have, you know, more... I may not miss a little bit. So, you know, where Walker Brook comes into the existing pipe, at High Street, what we would do here is construct a diversion structure and a system to convey lower flows into the existing pipe and then larger flows would then be conveyed into a diversion structure and continue within the new pipe. Right now, based on the information we have to date, we're showing this new pipe closer to the east side or the sidewalk side to avoid the water utilities. And I'm gonna switch to the next page now. Continuing along Field Street, there's fairly significant utility conflicts in First Street, so we thought it'd be best to avoid going into First Street for the new pipe and kind of running parallel to where the existing pipe is.
What's the setback there?
Question?
Well, what would the setback be from First Street there? One of the reasons I ask is that that's land that might potentially have housing on it at some point.
Right, so it appears that it's about 20 feet or so.
Okay, so no house would be on top of that anyway. There's a 25-foot setback, I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could adjust it, you know, to make sure. I'll make a note of that.
15 would be better.
Yeah, 15.
Yeah, 15.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, to give you some space there.
Just in case.
Let me switch to the next page. And now we've turned the view here, so First Street is going left to right. There is, let me zoom in some more. It's kind of hard to see, I think.
Oh, I see, yeah.
There is a sewer line right here. And...
And trees.
And trees. There, this sewer line that's coming down, you know, I've spoken with Bud Hall and he thought that it's likely that that's, you know, from the old school, so it's probably no longer needed. But he... His advice was that most of these houses, you know, their connections actually cross First Street to get into the sewer. So that's why we wanted to stay up here to the extent that we could. And then we would be turning down Glen, but there are some challenges here. Depending on how deep the proposed drainage pipe is, we may not need to, to new sewer lines, but basically we'll have to work out how to address the sewer and be able to provide connections to the houses on either side of the street. And then the water line is at risk of being disturbed during construction. So even if it's protected to the extent that it can be, if you, you know, dig a trench in here to put in the new infrastructure, put the soil back, there's, there's a possibility that the water line could rupture even in the future, maybe not during construction, but afterwards because it's... You know, they're very, very old lines that probably need to be replaced for, to protect them from future damage. And then... So now we've turned our view again, so this is coming down Glen. And, you know, just coming down the road and then... Go to the next sheet.
So there's sewer on both sides of the road there?
Well, that's proposed. So currently, there's one sewer line that goes down the road. Just... So the large S's are the proposed. What's interesting about the sewer here is that there's a line that comes across Glen and Bud explained that, you know, the surveyor didn't know where it goes, but he explained that it actually goes back behind the houses and follows the same corridor that the existing Walker Brook culvert follows. So the sewer turns... And it does that in two locations. So the proposed sewer line...
Sorry, Rosalie.
...wouldn't have to go any farther than this. It could reconnect into this line that then heads out that way.
Hey, Rosalie, I have a quick question for, I think, I'm not sure if it's for you or Mr. Hutchinson. As we look at all this detail, I guess, I guess you, Tom, is that who are the project leads on this really putting their eyes on the detail of this? Of this proposal or the options or things of that nature? Certainly not the select one, right?
No, right now it's...
Right, so it's informational for us at the moment.
Right.
I really want to get, because we have such a detailed agenda, I really want to get to the crux of what the question is for the board. If any.
Right. I just, well, the only thing I have left is to just provide an update on what our next steps are.
Okay.
I don't know that there's a specific question. I'm just sorry about that.
Did this come out on the packet? This came on the packet, right?
No. This is the first one.
Oh. Please, if I, if the board doesn't object, please send these to us in advance.
I didn't, I never got this.
All right.
We didn't have it in advance.
Then we shouldn't have it on the agenda. Does that like to digest it before the meeting? Okay, so... Any objections from the board?
No.
Just trying to digest things in advance and then, okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you. Sorry, Rosalie.
So, you know, our deliverables are to finalize these design drawings in addition to the layout. We'll look at identifying, you know, structure alterations and then a profile for the culvert with details and then a memo to describe the design basis, link together the field data that's been collected and provide a cost opinion and, and next steps. Because this is 25% level, so... And we're planning to get the drafts completed by the end of this month or early March. And then, you know, we'll send those to Tom and have Bud and Bob look at those and then finalize those deliverables. And I just, you know, I want to make sure that there's an understanding in terms of what needs to happen after our current scope is completed. Obviously, there are two potential options for reconnecting to Walker Brook. So either whether we're crossing Main Street or connecting to the existing culvert, there will need to be some coordination with Mass DOT, coordination with private property owners for easements, potentially additional confirmation of utility locations. And then we had recommended that the existing culvert, at least for this portion behind Glen and Ave, potentially be re-remined, which means aligning the pipe to provide additional support. But that can't, there's still a lot of unknowns about what that pipe looks like. And then, you know, the design needs to be carried through to a level that's suitable for construction and obviously permitting. Although permitting, I don't expect to be significant because most of the project area is not within wetland resources. It'll just be needed for, you know, the upper end at the group and also the lower end where the new culvert is discharging back into Walker Brook. And I think that's it. That's all I have for today.
Great. Thank you, Rosalie. Questions from the board?
Here, just, what, what, Rosalie, where this proposed waterway like goes down First Street and then turns down Glen Avenue? Is it a 90-degree turn? Wouldn't it be in the best interest of the city, town or whatever? Do you make a sweeping turn there rather than a 90-degree turn?
Yeah, I think we would have to look at that. I think, you know, for hydraulic purposes, the 90-degree turn is a bit aggressive. So, yeah, I agree that the configuration there should be examined.
Well, thank you for considering that and your planning. Thank you.
Does this go in front of any other work committees like Plant and Board or Conservation Commission or anything else for informational purposes or anything? Or should it?
It'll go before the Conservation.
It'll go, okay. All right, okay. Just want to make sure all eyes are on it because it's such a big initiative. Okay.
Yeah, and again, this wasn't supposed to be a decision-making thing. We've been asked for an update and this is an update of what they have and where they are in the process.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah, fair enough. Yeah. Okay. Rosalie, thank you so much. Sorry I interrupted your presentation, but it was very good.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Aye.
Okay, number 10, FY24 Budget Presentations, 138 group purchasing.
We can skip to the people that are here.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. Who do we want to skip to? What's that?
Fire order.
Fire order?
He's been your phone all day.
Okay.
This is quite just one thing.
Chief?
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
I'm not a walkie-talkie, I thought.
Forest Ward, 294, is that the word?
Yeah. All right, go for it. All right. Yep. So we got salaries increase, $1,895 to $2,500. Any questions from the board on that?
Good, good detailed explanations.
Vehicle repairs, 500 to 1,000. What was it, equipment replacement?
We'll have to fix your formula there so that it gives you a total salary for the previous year that we can see the percentage rise. And that's a... That's just a problem.
But chief, we got some new equipment for the, this program last year, right? And you have enough in your maintenance budget for that?
Yes.
Okay.
With a lot of that that we were able to get has the warranties through it. So we're good for a couple of years with anything with that.
Any questions from the board? Do you have any questions for us? Thanks for hanging in there. TA? And maybe for the, Alyssa, when we put the next agenda together, maybe we can move the department budgets up to the top so we can get folks either thinking about that or just look at it. All right, who's next? Police Department? All right, Chief Stratt and Becky? Well, we, chief, anything you want to highlight?
Well, let's see. Do you, do you have any questions first? Like, I don't mind highlighting, but...
Go, 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 the ones that you think are the important changes first.
So last year, well, the last several years, we've been way over in our overtime budget. The primary reason for that is because nobody was budgeting for backfilling shifts. We're mandated to attend all this training, but there was no budget line to backfill the shifts when the officers went to training. So that would put us over every time because we weren't planning properly for the shift coverage. So they also prior hadn't budgeted enough for vacation, sick and personal time. So we added that last year. This year, what we did is we backfilled the in-service. So we added that this year. We're trying to take little baby steps, so it's not so much all at once, but we have to budget efficiently to be accurate.
And the bottom line change is... Okay, so we've salaries up 12%, and that's for contractual purposes on new staff?
That's correct.
Okay. And total expenses up 18.3?
We just get to expenses. Let me just get to expenses. So, one of the biggest things we had, we added some community policing expense supplies. We host a lot of community events. We have to pay for those. Becky and I's personal pockets have been drained for the last two years, so we added a line item to cover the cost of those events. We also added our food and vet supplies, and we have, you know, some certification for Wendell. The company we were, that the dog was donated from closed without notice, so we now have to pay for him to be trained.
On the canine, how was that funded in the past?
So, the canine, we had fundraised, as we did again this year, with some cash calendars. A little bit of sad news, Canine Max was injured. He's 11 years old now, which is very old for a police dog. He will be retiring in the upcoming couple of weeks. Sergeant Derry did secure us a grant through Massachusetts Vestadog, so we will be purchasing a new police dog March 13th. It will cost the town $900, so we got a grant for $8,000 of 8,900. So, we're pretty excited about that. But that now is going to come into our budget, because I don't think it's really appropriate for officers to fundraise to pay for something that is a town service, so. I appreciate Sergeant Derry's hard work on that, but I think it's something we should cover as a town.
Any questions from the board?
Do you hear?
Any other major changes?
We upped our travel budget just a little bit, the hotels and the costs. We don't have a lot of access to local training, so just, we've had to have officers stay in a hotel for different trainings.
And those trainings are required under the new...
They are, they are. Like, right now, we have, our academy member is at EVOC, the Emergency VfO Operation Course, and traditionally, they've been allowed to stay on the base, and with no notice, we were told she had to stay in a hotel, so, you know, stuff like that, that we just can't plan for.
Chief, are you fully staffed at the mall?
So, we are just about fully staffed. We just, our female recruit graduates March 17th, and then she will have approximately 16 weeks of field training, and then we, with all of your approval, will be putting Tyger Rusa in front of you for our last vacancy. We haven't lost anyone, we're stable. I look around when I go to the chief's meetings, and everyone complains about staffing, and I smile and say, "We're fully staffed," and everyone wants to poke me, but we're doing great. I couldn't be happier, so.
Thank you.
And this budget will help you continue to do great?
Yes, it will. We're doing well.
Okay.
So, Chairman, if you want to do the TASER thing, I'll come back to the others.
Sure, there's no objection from the board, we can move to the TASER agenda item. We'll have a memo.
Will we have a TA on this?
TA, yeah, CAM on the police. So, Chief, tell us a little bit about the TASER program.
Okay, so, we've been hearing TASERS for many years, are, with the police reform bill, de-escalation is part of the mandatory state use-of-force policy. We've come into a situation where the department has never issued every officer a TASER. We currently have one broken and three TASERS. We don't even have enough for on-duty officers right now, and this really became an urgent issue to me several weeks ago. You may have heard, we had a little incident on Main Street, and we had a bit of a physical struggle with a gentleman, and I didn't have a TASER, and I backed my officers up, and that is just not acceptable anymore. We are obligated to give our officers every last lethal option available to them. It puts us in a really terrible liability situation if we don't, so we reached out to Axon and asked them about, you know, if we were able to pay upfront, could we get a discount? They gave us $1,000, so it's better than nothing. I do want to clarify, this is not a five-year contract. I know that's been spoken, this is not a five-year contract. They guarantee, they warranty our equipment, but paying upfront eliminates, there's no contract. This would have been a five-year contract had we done a payment plan, but this is a one-and-done. They'll cover our equipment for five years, but it's not an actual contract, so I just wanted to clarify.
So, we can buy them all at once?
We can buy them all at once, we're done. The quote that I gave you came in hot off the press at noon today with the new discount in it. It's good until February 28th, and if we purchase upfront, we will have them within four to six weeks. My goal is to have us up, running, and trained, because this is a new model, because the ones they, we have, they no longer service because they're just outdated.
In that five-year maintenance window, they change models, so they offer you the new model?
This model's guaranteed for that time.
This model's guaranteed for that time.
So, they do have a newer model coming out, but we actually don't like that model. We like this, this, a little bit. It's not older, but it's, it's out now, and that's the one we want.
Okay, so this is a request to, to fund the TASER program out of ARPA for $53,874, $53,874.60, and saving $1,000 on paying upfront. Mr. Hutchison, anything to add in the discussion?
I would just strongly urge a replacement program which staggered the re-buying, the replacement of the TASERS going forward, so it's not a long summer.
It's not, i- if we can replace it, so this will be under warranty for five years, so should we have an issue within these five years, they will replace them. That's how this works. We can't, we could buy a replacement, but right now, because one just broke, they don't service that anymore, and the problem is the new model, we have to be certified on.
Do you, does this...
I'm not talking about this product, I'm talking about in five years when you start replacing them.
Future.
If you could do one or two a year rather than...
You can't, it doesn't work that way. You have to get them all together, because it's going to be a new model by then. They get outdated, and the technology gets old, so you have to buy the brand-new, the model that's out, kind of like a cellphone problem.
I think a similar, similar kind of approach, do you, is this enough to have two on the shelf, or whatever needs to be on the shelf?
So, my plan would be, all the full-time officers would be assigned one, it would be in their belt, just like their firearm, they would put it in their safe when they go home. The reserve officers, when they come to work, they will take it out of the safe at the station. They will not get one assigned to them. But the full-timers, because when they work football games, the carnival especially, they need these options, we don't have them.
I guess my question is, how quick is replacement if something breaks from the vendor?
So, we'll have, we will have three extra, two extra in the station, because we won't always have the part-timers working.
So, enough to do a swap?
So, we would just swap one out and get a new one within a week or so, and if we were able to order these, we'll have them in our hands within four weeks.
So, how many are these, are bigger, were you...
I think it was 14, I don't know. Yeah, I think it was... Yeah, it was supposed to be 14, was what the quote was supposed to be. Because we wanted 12 for the full-time officers, and then a couple...
Yeah, right, two.
Yeah, so.
All right, so it's $53,874.60, that covers us for five years or 60 months, and the negotiated rate was saving 18.38 per year, or $9,000 over the term of the five years. Is there a motion to accept the proposal? Mr. Hutchison, I assume you support this?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And you're going to work with it.
Okay, is there a motion to...
Yeah, I make a motion to buy the TASERS from the police department from the ARPA funds totaling $53,874.60.
Give her a second. Motion second in the discussion. Fair and un, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose abstentions, no carries.
Not that I feel like I have, but I'm going to abstain.
Okay, can you note that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Are you afraid I'm going to Tase you? Might now.
I kind of lost my place here, James. Chief, Animal Control?
Yeah.
Yep, thanks. So, you got salaries down 2.6%, expenses up 9%.
Right.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty forward.
TA?
TA. Animal inspector?
Yep. Salary's up 1.42%. TA?
TA.
Is that a future?
We have to do capital. We have to do the capital.
Oh, capital, okay. Do you have capital on this?
I don't see.
You can run through it, though.
Yeah.
Do you want a quick summary?
Yeah, sure.
None, just summary. All right, so, and if anyone was willing to suggest ARPA funding for any of this, I would be happy to accept that. So, the first capital request is a replacement of our MDTs. Those are the mobile data terminals. Those are in our computers in our cruiser, we've had those since 2007. This model we have had from two, since 2014, which is exceptionally old for computers. We refurbished them in 2020, moved up to Windows 10. They are really not working. They're, they're dropping signals. We just, the good news with this is, we had budgeted for one, it ended up being almost double the price of what they quoted us, and Pittsfield PD came through and said, "Hey, look what we're using, and here, let us show it to you." We love it, it's half the price of the ones we were using. Guys have tested it out, works great in our cruiser, so we are grateful to Pittsfield PD for helping us with that. So, we are purchasing, would like to purchase four of those to replace them in the patrol cars. Our computers are...
What's the total on that?
It is $19,576 for the four, and that's what stands, the laptop and the stand. Because you have to have the stand specific.
You know you got to go to the real, the real hard people, the finance committee.
I've dealt with scary, sort of.
What's next?
Next is the patrol rifles. So, we have taken advantage of a military surplus program for quite a long time. They are Vietnam rifles, no exaggeration, they're old. One of our rifles just broke. We're lucky enough, we do have an armorer on staff, but it's just not repairable. And the biggest issue I have with this as a department head is when we qualify, you should be qualifying on the model that's in your car, the model that you're going to be using. Right now, we have different rifles in each car, because we just have never been consistent about the way we purchase anything. I want a consistent model. It's for qualifying legally, if you qualify on something, and then your rifle's an M4 in your cruiser, but you qualified on the AR, I don't think we're really covered for that.
Yeah, liability.
It is a huge liability issue, so we have, you know, we are looking to have a consistent platform in the four cruisers.
What's total on that?
$14,867. And that's the highest, because we haven't decided on a model, or if it, or if this was going to be approved, so we want the highest quote. This very well could be a lot lower. You ready for her?
Yep.
Okay. We have a replacement of a patrol cruiser, which is standard every year, Ford Explorer, just like what we have. We are very short cruisers, because for whatever reason, several years ago, we got two in one year. They are both at the end of their life cycle. One has 110,000 miles on it and begs us every day to not drive it.
On the cruisers, is it by years of service or miles? When you look at it?
Wear and tear.
Wear and tear.
We try to keep it as long as we can in rotation, you know, so the one that is going out is well over 100,000 miles, and we just had to replace the alternator, and there's a wheel bearing issue.
Just one thing I want to throw on that, just think about too, when you have police cruisers, the idle time.
Yeah.
Right, so they have 130,000 or whatever, but it's the idle time.
Because you got to keep it running, have your computers up and running, right?
Well, in the, in the, yeah, when it's really cool, or you have to be really careful with that. And we take our equipment in when we rest the cars for two days, because they're assigned to a specific line of officers, so we do take our equipment in, so it doesn't sit out in the cold. So, that's just the replacement cruiser.
Yeah, what's that?
$62,513.
And that's fully loaded?
Everything, radio, MDT, that we included it in that price, instead of putting, so the four MDTs go, will replace in the other cruisers, the other, the fifth MDT is in that price. And then, the last thing, I know this is a lot, is a replacement admin cruiser, which is mine. I currently drive a hybrid electric cruiser, and it's seven years old. It's had a rejection sticker on it from September to January, because it had a check engine light on it that would not go out. The part was no longer made, per Johnson Ford, I believe that's written in your, in the capital, and it was unfixable. And low and behold, the check engine light went out Friday, and I flew it down and got a sticker on it. The check engine light is back on, but I got a sticker, so...
A good free year though, Chief, okay, so...
I got a free year out of it.
Get us up next year.
So, it's, the biggest issue I have with the car is, it's, it's fine, but it's not a snow car. If, if we have bad weather, I have to take my own personal car to calls, because I can't drive this in the snow, so it's really not a practical cruiser.
And how, how old is that one?
It's seven years old. And it would be a trade, it wouldn't, so.
Any questions from the board on this?
The price tag on that one.
Good question, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Boyle.
Are you getting the rifles? Did I hear you correctly, that you are a Vietnamese Vietnam War era?
No, that's what we have. We have. We've had them for a very long time. You'll have to come over and check them out, come over and see them.
I don't want to see them yet.
If you look closely, Chief, you may see...
Are they M4?
M4.
M4?
Yeah, we have M4s and we have some ARs, but the military surplus program is really great, but it's very difficult to keep up with it, and it's just not, it's not worth it anymore.
Okay, so those capital ends will go into the town warrant and...
Well, my intent was to do all the capital items at once at a future meeting.
Okay, sorry.
And that, that then becomes the capital.
Okay, great, okay.
So, that's why we didn't receive those.
But good to know.
Hey, it's a preview, it's a sneak preview.
Is there anything, is there anything on your list, and I'll just throw it up the board, anything on your list that's a high priority that should be addressed now, that's from a risk perspective?
So, of what I just told you, the MDTs are a necessity, I really don't have a choice, we have to have the computers in the car. The rifles, obviously for liability purposes, the TASERS, which I know is ARPA, that's those. And, you know, I, our wish list is portable radios, but I feel like we've asked for enough.
I'm not sure when you guys came into the meeting, you were here for the early part of the meeting, we're talking about ARPA, so it's going to be a work group, this, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Boyle, for the Select Board, and...
Two members of the Finance Committee.
And the two members of the Finance Committee, they're going to advise Town Manager on the balance of the ARPA funds, so, you know, put it on that list as we kind of work through and see what else comes up, right, so.
So, I, I did...
You kind of snuck this one under the grade, under the timing, so that decision's...
I did speak with Mr. Hutchison about staggering our portable radio replacements for next year, so.
Any other questions from the board?
I would happily support using ARPA funds for the more immediate needs for the police department.
Thank you.
To do that sooner rather than wait for town meeting approval. So, just putting that out there.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we go to open as a licensing board to approve the wine and cheese?
Sure, yes, absolutely, yep. And that would be under the, that fell under our items not anticipated $48 before the meeting, so, our wine and cheese, yes, yeah. So, come on up.
It's under the, yeah, good.
So, you have a wine and cheese event coming up.
Yes.
And...
It was supposed to be tomorrow.
It was supposed to be, oh, Valentine's Day.
Yeah, but it, but you canceled the meeting, I was trying to get it on the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, I wanted to just make sure we had clearance to do it before we really advertised it.
Okay, and this is what, we need liability insurance for a day, or what, what do we need to approve? So, we need to, is this a licensing board?
We do need a one-day insurance from an agent that, or a insurer that might have arranged for us to work with.
Okay.
And then, there's...
Kelly's Package Store has added the town under their insurance for the day, so.
Okay, so we have to have a motion open as a licensing board first, so let's go with that motion.
So, move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Quick question.
Mr. Boyle.
Kelly's Package Store, are they catering this event?
They are catering it.
Well, they're already licensed.
They're already licensed, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need a license, you wasted all your time.
I know, but when I, when I did this before, the Select Board said, "When we do it again, I have to come before you."
Don't ever listen to a Select Board. That's like the one I had.
So...
There you go.
Thank you.
We'll do the official...
Tomorrow, what would they submit?
It's going to be the 23rd, 6:30.
Yeah, I think so.
So, how about a motion that we, if that's, if that's the case, if Kelly's Liquors catering an event, they're licensed and they can...
So how about a motion that we, if that's, if that's the case, if Kelly's Liquors cater an event, they're licensed, and they can do it, and all that kind of stuff, it would just, maybe a motion just to support the event and sorry for keeping you here.
The question was because it was on a town property or something, something like that, I think, at one point. I'll make a motion to support, the select board supports and approves the wine and cheese event to be held at the senior center.
Sure, second.
Yes.
Yep.
Seconded that.
Okay, motion, second, any discussion? Here and then, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extensions?
I abstain. I work in Kelly's.
Okay.
I want to close as the licensing board.
Motion, close, second, okay. Now, all in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye. Close, extensions, motion carries. Great, thank you, Kelly, and sorry for keeping you. Yeah. All right.
Group purchases.
Group purchases, is that, that's under Alyssa.
Yeah, this is the same except for the fee to be part of the Franklin Reform Council government program, which are kind of super dependent strong versus.
That's, go for TA. Town planner budget?
This includes the the rise in pay to attract, retain planners, that's the main thing. The reason it's down for fifty-six thousand here is that that's the step at thirty-six hours.
Yep.
The other four are available through the contingency salary line item, which is not in this budget.
TA?
TA.
Good question. Any progress, Tom, on that front?
We're making progress in our, in our marketing materials.
Oh.
And we do have a list of places to send it and a plan for marketing the position fairly aggressively. As the current semester comes to a close, we'll see. We're hoping, like we got last time, that there are people coming out who have previous work experience, who are getting, you know, who are now going into planning. That was the great prospect we had earlier, who unfortunately didn't want to leave the Boston area for family reasons.
I think that's a good strategy. In fact, we could get college graduate, who's in education, obviously, as a kind of an intern position, because I think that's the best we're going to do.
We'll see.
Yep. Okay, communications.
Unfortunately, we have a sign here tonight that this is fairly spread for the budget with just regular salary changes. You'll note that it's, it comes in at four point two two percent, because there are shift differentials that are included in this budget as well. The expenses are up minimally mainly due to the radio contract.
Who's salaries, oh, there, okay, the director of reserve, okay, never mind. Hundred fifty-five thousand, F twenty-three, and we're at thirteen thousand.
And both of that is reimbursed through the cell phone text, direct estate, yeah?
Through the cell phone text.
Whatever.
It's the nine-one-one grant.
Nine-one-one.
Yep. TA?
TA.
Building Department?
Again, minimal rise. Some of the expenses have actually come down in order to help offset the software support agreement. The rise in salary is usual.
TA?
TA.
Emergency management?
Wanted that one to shop?
That's straightforward, just TA. If there's no objection by the board, basically, I know this is hap, I had a conversation with Glenn related to the recent weather events, and we talked about the emergency management plan. He's finding some more work that needs to be done to close the gaps in that plan, so I think he's addressing those hours. Is that correct? Or addressing the hours for the emergency management, Glenn's role? Emergency management addressing his hours? Or?
Well, it's a stipend position.
The stipend, okay.
So you're on hours per se, but if you calculate it per hour worked, the compensation is much more reasonable.
Yep.
And in fact, our previous emergency manager, I urged him to make the rise more, and he declined to do that for himself. But now, I think it's a, it's more, it's more than fair to the town for what we're asking.
Yeah, the description's pretty clear, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, TA?
TA.
And notice there's a broad range of duties and possibilities on the.
There are, especially with the recent news of dams and things of that nature, and. Any other budget items, like missing thing?
Traffic.
Traffic commission, yeah. TA?
TA.
TA, okay.
We agree with that.
All right, future, town manager update. Yeah, we did the ARPA funds.
Yes.
Town manager update?
Most of what I've been doing in the past week is reflected in the agenda for tonight's meeting, so not much else. The state just provided some good news. Their valuation of state-owned land in Dalton is going up eleven percent. This year, the town's receiving seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight, so next year, that should rise to about, rise about eight thousand to to about eighty-seven thousand dollars for that income statement. Always ask them to give us, to value our land more highly when they give us their enormous payment in lieu of taxes. Of course, they don't pay taxes, but the state paid them for their own land. They went up eleven percent, which is better than they've done.
Yeah, they should do that on full books.
Town hall staff are now completely out of the building. The building superintendent will be preparing town hall to be as best as removal over the next month. Work is scheduled to begin in one month, March thirteenth, with asbestos removal and remediation, the reconstruction, starting about forty-five days after that, beginning in May. Staff could be back in town hall early in the summer. My new intern, Joe Callahan, has taken community engagement as a focus for his studies.
Oh.
So I'll be working with him as we try and generate more ideas.
Excellent.
By happy coincidence.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I've been introducing him to the job and the files I'd like him to work with. I also have some ideas on increasing community engagement. I would like to propose a townline survey, which should be mailed to all households with a postcard self-addressed and noting preferred times for town meeting, which you'd rather go now than. Any other ideas for helping us out with that? So I've started work on that.
That's great, yeah.
And that's all I have for that.
Okay. Any questions for our town manager? All right, any other items not anticipated for you as part of the meeting?
We do have one.
Okay.
The town treasurer has asked the select board to sign the sewer warrant for the second building. Since it's not a, since it's not a sewer leak discussion, I thought the select board could take that up. We don't quite have to do it at this meeting, but it's due the day after our next scheduled meeting. So there is a certain time consideration, and I'm sure it would help her be easier to have the warrant approved. And I believe you have that. Is that?
No, I thought we were doing that on the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Do you have it, that you can pull it up on the screen, we can review it?
She just gave me a paper copy of it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Nice communication on this then.
Can we go in individually inside?
If you approve it, but you don't know what the amount is.
We don't, yeah, we have the detail in front of us.
We can approve it next meeting.
It will work.
It will work.
Or we could, we could call a special Zoom meeting too.
Yeah, if we need to, but it sounds like this will work.
Yeah, okay. We'll leave it to you. All right. Any other items? Any remarks to the select board? Any? Okay. I'm sorry, I skipped future agenda items. Everybody should have the list in their packet, the future agenda items, any other future agenda items to add? Okay, here and then. Moving on to the announcements. Annual car permits, bag stickers, recycling only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. The town Dalton currently has the following job opportunities: a highway mechanic, a building and grounds assistant, and town planner. If interested, please visit the town's website or call the town manager's office for more information. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The Dalton Police Department will like to remind the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which goes into effect in November, which went into effect November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and remains in effect through April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. There's no parking on streets between one AM to six AM. The Central Berkshire Regional School District will hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget at seven PM on Thursday, February sixteenth, at Lakona Regional High School. Residents of the CVRSD community are invited to attend the hearing. The town is contracted with Colonial Power to provide electricity plant for town residents. That takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices significantly lower than current ever-sourced prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more detail or to opt in or out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. The Open Space and Recreation Committee will be holding a public forum to discuss the Pines Community Forest on Sunday, February twenty-sixth, at two thirty PM in the senior center. Please see the town's website for more details. The town clerk's office is now located in the bank building at forty-eight Main Street. The town hall is now closed to the public for renovation. The police department and library are still open. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, February twenty-seventh, at seven PM at the senior center, with an option for remote participation. And with that, I have a motion to adjourn the open session and move to executive session. I guess that's how we do it.
Okay. We got to do it. Let's see, I'll just make a motion to go in executive session.
Okay.
Make a motion to go in executive session for reason number three. Discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the legating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Federal multi-district litigation versus CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Alurgic.
Sure, second?
Second.
We'll call.
And now return to the office.
Now return, yep.
Okay, we'll call, Mr. Strope?
Yes.
Mr. Esco?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bishop?
Yes.
And I'm the yes. Thank you, good night, Dalton. Thanks for hanging in, you guys.